I'm good.
I want to welcome everybody to the, let me get in the right page, February 4th, public hearing. Mr. Rissner, you want to start us off?
Sure. My name is Jason Rissner. I'm the county administrator and I have a presentation I'll go through on House Bill 581. And at the end of that, the board may have some comments and the chairman will open the floor for, for public comment. We're going to talk a little bit about floating homestead exemptions, the impact of our current property valuations, and then what's known as opting out of HP 581. So, House Bill 581 originated in the 2024 legislative session. There were some state legislators that were concerned about rising assessments and the rising property taxes that were going along with that. The Senate kind of wanted to look at controlling those increases. The House was interested in expanding some sales tax options. They sort of rolled all that together in, in House Bill 581 and a resolution that had to go along with that, which was HR 1022. Both of those passed on the very last night of the legislative session. After approval by the state legislature, it had to go before the voters. That happened in November 2024. It was approved by the voters and it had an effective date of 1/125. And so, House Bill 581 is, is currently in effect. Just before we get into the details of that bill, I wanted to emphasize to you that none of our existing exemptions are affected by HP 581. It has no impact on, on those that are already in place. There were three major components of the bill. One is the statewide floating homestead exemption, which is the primary thing we're here to talk about. The second thing is the opportunity to pursue a new local option, sales tax, which they call a FLOST. And then finally, there were some provisions in the bill that changed some, some property tax collection processes. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. So, the first major component is that statewide floating homestead exemption. And to, I want to try to explain a little bit about how that works. You know, a homestead exemption is designed to offset or reduce the increases in the value of your property. And the, so with a floating exemption, the, the actual exemption amount is not a set dollar amount. It's not a $10,000 exemption, or a $20,000 exemption, or a $100,000 exemption. The, the amount floats from year to year based on the current value of your property and how that relates to the base year. So, here's how a basic floating, here's how a, yes, a basic floating exemption kind of lays out. So, suppose you had a, a property with a tax value of $100,000. The next year, your, your value climbs to $110,000. Your, your value is locked to that base year. So, you're, you're, for tax purposes, you're back to $100,000 value. So, you, you've got a $10,000 exemption. Say, two years later, your property value goes from, your property value climbs to $125,000. Your, your value is still linked to that base year. And so, now your exemption is worth $25,000. So, it floats from, from the 10 to the 25. And it, it would do that each year. So, that's kind of how, how a basic floating exemption works. The, the floating exemption called for in, in House Bill 581 is a floating exemption with an adjustment for inflation. And so, if you have, that same property starts at $100,000 and you've got a 2% inflation rate. Same thing, your property, the next year goes up to $110,000. So, rather than going all the way back to that original $100,000, you've got that $100,000 plus the inflationary factor. So, so your value is $102,000. So, in, in this example, your exemption amount will be $8,000. So, that's, that's how it works with that inflationary piece worked in. And that, that's, again, what, what 581 calls for. Some additional information, again, no impact on the existing homestead exemptions. The base year would be the 2024 assessed value. The value does reset when a house sells or when it goes through a substantial property change. The exemption is, is specific to a piece of property. It can't be transferred to a, a different piece of property. The bill does contain that provision that allows each jurisdiction the opportunity to opt out. And, and that, that ability to opt out is individual to each jurisdiction. So, you know, in theory, a school board could decide to stay in, a county could decide to stay out, and the city could decide to stay in. So, it's, it's individual. Each, each entity can make their own call there. If an entity is, is interested in opting out, the process is, is as follows. You've got three public hearings. They have to be advertised in the newspaper and on the website at least a week prior to the hearing. And then, at the conclusion of those required hearings, the, the board has to approve a resolution. And then, all those documents have to be delivered to the Secretary of State's office by March 1st. The, the Board of Commissioners has voted to, to initiate that opt-out process. So, the, the first hearing we, we had planned for 1/21 got canceled due to the weather. We held one on 1/28 at 6:00 PM. You're here for the 2/4 hearing. And then, we'll have another one of these on Thursday at 6:00 PM. We are planning to hold the call meeting at 6:30 after that hearing to, for the board to consider passing that resolution to opt out. So, just some considerations, and I'm not trying to speak for the board, but I, I think just some general concerns about this. There's, there's concern about the current state of our, of our digest, where the values are right now. There's, it, it appears that values are, are low. And if they are low by a substantial amount, and, and you're locked in to the rate of inflation, you'll never catch up. So, if, if values are 25% low, or 30% low, and you can only go up by a 2% rate of inflation, or a 3% rate of inflation, you never catch up. And so, and just as a reminder, there are, there are two aspects to, to calculating your property tax. One is, is the value of your property. The second is the millage rate. And so, if, if we opt out, values are adjusted to get them in line with the market, the, and we have substantially higher, the digest is substantially higher than what it is now, the board can always adjust the millage rate down. And so, that's, that's an activity that the board does every year, right around budget time. And they, they set that millage rate. And so, they could look and say, "Look, we've got a substantially higher digest. We're going to set the millage rate lower." And so, your overall property tax bill stays the same. So, that's kind of an exercise that, that we go through every year. And so, just wanted to kind of explain how that works a little bit. And then, the final thing I wanted to mention here is, assuming the Board of Commissioners opts out, there's, there's always the opportunity for this board to, to decide that they want to, to enact a, a homestead exemption of any type. And so, they could, they could decide, you know, we want to do a, a, any dollar amount, or for this age group, or they could craft it any way they wanted to. And they would go to our legislative delegation and say, "Hey, we're interested in, in doing a, a new homestead exemption for the citizens of Jones County. This is what we want it to look like." And then, our legislative delegation would put it through the process up at the state capitol to, to enact a new legislation, a, a new Last thing on that. 581 is very specific in, in how you do this exemption. Opting out would give the board the flexibility to structure that the way they, they see fit, and what makes sense for, for us. And so, you lose that flexibility. If you stick with 581, you could get to the same place on our own at a later date. So... All right. The remaining provisions in the law. There's this concept of a FLOST, which is an additional penny sales tax. This is, this is the part where some in the General Assembly were interested in moving to more of a, a sales tax type approach. And, and this would enable that. This would have to be something that the board would opt to pursue. They would negotiate with the city, just like a regular FLOST, come up with an agreement. That all would be submitted to the voters. And the voters would have to approve that before that additional penny went into effect. There were some provisions there about if a, a city elects to opt out, that option is off the table. This is not something that, that our board has looked at or, or talked about, but it, it's just something that the bill allows. So, I thought I'd mention. And then, the final major component with these procedural changes, none of this is impacted by staying in or opting out. So, there are some changes that you'll see on the assessment notice that you get each year. Typically, you see a number on there that's your estimated tax amount. Now, I think in, that's a standard form that the, the state sends out. Instead of seeing that estimated tax amount, you're going to see an estimated rollback rate. Another change there is that the Board of Tax Assessors can appeal sales ratio studies directly, rather than having the Board of Commissioners appeal on their behalf. It does require that, that every property in the county be reappraised every three years. There are some changes related to settlement conferences, which is part of the process of you appealing your tax value. And so, in, in order to get the, the 15% reduction, which is a, a piece of all that, you have to, to participate in that settlement conference in good faith. And then, the final thing there is, again, related to that appeal process. The three-year lock is modified so that you'll only receive it if you receive a value reduction on, on your appeal. So, all that stays in place, no matter what happens with opting out or staying in. All right. So, that's the end of my presentation. Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Kitts, have you got any comments you want to make before you open it up for...
That's, but that's the pamphlet that's on the screen here. So, y'all, please get one of those. It's, it's the same thing we were looking at on the screen. I noticed people were taking pictures, but that's, yeah, that's a hard copy of, of exactly what he's going over on the screen. So, not a lot of comments, Chairman. I'll, Jason did a great job of explaining a very complex and confusing bill. And I'm, I'm not, I'm going to put my personal opinion out there for, for once. Most in local governments and even in state governments positions learned about this bill three or four months ahead of the vote. Most bills that come out are explained a lot, in a lot more depth, a lot more detail, and a lot longer, so that we know what, what it is, so that when we have constituents calling us, we'll be able to explain to them. This bill did not go through that way. It was very confusing. It was very, in my opinion, pushed through. And again, the biggest hurdle for us is, like Jason said, we're, our, our tax values are inconsistent. Some are low, some are high, some are in the, in the middle. What this does is they require us to freeze them as of January 1st. And, and that's your tax base. That's what you're going by. So, the ones that are low-valued, and the county depends on those taxes to provide services, they'll never increase to where your value of your house should be. So, if your, if your va, house is valued at $100,000 and you know it's worth $150,000, you'll never get to that $150 mark at 2% a year. And if you do decide to sell your house, your house is valued lower than what you should be getting for. The flip side of that is, if your house is overvalued now, if you think your house is valued more than it should be, then you're still never going to come down. You're still subject to that 2% higher and higher every year. One of the things in this bill that's really concerning for us is you're locked in at the value that your house is at. And then, you only do the 2% to 3% a year increases based on the, the CPI, is what they're planning to go off of. So, if you're locked in at that, as a homeowner, you're always locked into it. But say, your house is worth $100,000. You sold it for $250,000 to a new, a new couple, homeowners. Somebody coming into the county buys a brand-new house, whatever it sold for, that becomes their new value. And then, it starts 2%. So, a house that was $100,000 in value one year, sold for $200,000 six months later, is now valued at $200,000 with a 2% a year increase. So, there's no control over that on our end. And the only control we have is what Jason talked about, the rollback rates, rolling back the millage rate, which we have done. If you look at our tax digest, we have rolled it back to be revenue-neutral for the seven years that, that we've been on this, that most of us have been on this, on this board. That means we know, we get an average, let me use a round number, $30 million a year to run this county for all the services we provide, Public Works, Sheriff's Department, all, of Tax Assessors, Tax Commissioner, all these services that we provide, roughly $30 million a year. We know what it takes to run this county. So, every year, if the values increase, and you're going to pay more on your taxes, we roll the millage rate back, which is the multiplier of what your value is. We roll it back so it's revenue-neutral for us. So, it's not saying your taxes didn't go up. It says, if you're, if you increased it, or you built on something new, or you remodeled something, for some reason, your value of your house went up, then yes, you're going to pay more taxes on it. But for us, if your house was at $100,000 last year and it went to $120,000, we roll the millage rate back, so you're still paying on the $100,000, the dollar amount that you paid to the government. So, that's what control we have as a government. And we've been able to do all seven years. So, that's why we can honestly and correctly say that we have not increased taxes. We, we have rolled them back so that our revenue on the county side is the same as it was the year before, the prior year. And, and so, I, I wanted to really say that to everybody, because I know it's, it's tough to hear. So, we were going to cap it at 2% increase forever and ever. That, I think most of the people on this board would say, "If we knew our values were right in the county, that would be a pretty good deal. We, we would probably all do that." We even asked, most all counties asked the state, "Can we have a little bit longer to get our values right?" And then, we'd probably opt in. Answer is no. You have to opt in between January 1st and March 1st is the only time deadline. And you got to have the three meetings. And you got to advertise them and have your three hearings that we're having now by March the 1st. And you got to opt out, or you're forever in it. Well, for 50 years, anyway. So, it's forever for all of us. So... I, I hope not. I hope we're all here for 50 years, but I, I had a feeling I, I probably won't be. But...
Thank you, Commissioner Kitts. Yeah. I, I want to say one thing. You are not losing your homestead a lot. So many people said, "What about homestead?" You're not losing your homestead. You still have your homestead. The person who authored this bill has advised the counties to opt out, because this is not the bill he presented. They took his book bill and added stuff in it. And it's, and he's advising the counties that y'all need to opt out, because this is not what I presented for the voters. And like Commissioner Kitts said, there's a lot of confusing stuff in it that don't help any of us. It actually hurts a lot of us. And that's what people don't understand, the long-term effect.
And I agree. One of the things is you have to dummy it down some for me, because I don't think a lot of times that tax brain, you know, millage rates, blah, 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 blah. Sometimes that's in one ear and out the other. The one thing to know is if you already have homestead exemption right now, your homestead exemption is going to stay. This does not jeopardize anything, any way about the way your homestead exemption's already set up. The guy who actually started the bill was because he owned other property in other parts of the state. So, he wanted to be able to take advantage of homestead exemption for all of his vacation houses. Well, that's not what it turned into. It turned into something completely different. And other people started putting in and shoving in at the very end. And it made, it made no sense. For us to be able to opt out of it within three months of it becoming a bill says a lot. They know that this bill is not for the people. And especially with our taxes being as, to explain that in terms that I understood. My house, Jason's house, and Chris's house is all built at the same time. We all three are on the same amount of property, okay? My house gets valued at $250,000. Jason's gets valued at $150,000. And Chris's gets valued at $175,000. Why is my house more than theirs? We've all built at the same time. It's all the same square footage. That's a lot of people in Jones County. The property, properties are valued like that. And that's what we've got to correct before we could step into a bill like this, because I'm going to still be paying higher taxes for the same houses that these two guys also live in at, you know? So, we have to get our tax values correct across Jones County, so that everybody is fairly and equally paying the taxes that we all should be paying, not just one person or 150 people paying. But your homestead exemptions are not in danger of being taken away from you. Only thing we're doing is we're opting out of this tax that is going to lock y'all in to something that the next person that buys your home, Lord help them, they're going, they're going to pay for you opting out. And we are going to, the county, the kids in the school system, the services that we provide to everybody in Jones County, we're going to go without, because we're not going to have that income to come in. So, then, the millage rates would have to go up, or the taxes would have to go higher. Okay? That's if we opted in to this. Does that make any more sense?
Anybody that'd come forward and, and speak? And you would just, if you'll come, you need to sit back there?
I can't. I don't want to get up.
Okay.
But I have a question. I pay homestead exemption. I'm 89 years old. Why do I pay homestead exemption?
So, so if you have the homestead exemption, it should exempt you from a certain amount of taxes. You, you don't, you shouldn't pay, you don't pay homestead exemption. If you're getting the exemption, that means they're exempting...
That amount.
This amount of taxes based on senior citizens. You can reduce your, your tax amount down. So, that's the exemption that you're getting. You're exempt from paying some of the taxes that, that others are, are not exempt from. Like, if you rent property or if you own four homes, you can only have exemption on the one that you're living in. You can't, you can't put an exemption, a homestead exemption on your rental properties.
I have one home. I live in it. And I pay homestead exemption. I moved here from a county where I did not pay homestead exemption. I didn't pay school bond or whatever it is either. So, I'm not understanding what you're, how does this work for me? What does this mean, opting out of homestead exemption? What does it mean?
You want me to pull up your property?
Homestead is a, is a benefit. It's actually a reduction in what you pay. It's not some, it's not something that you pay or an addition, an additional tax. It's a, it's a reduction to your taxes. It's a benefit. You want homestead exemption if you qualify for it.
You don't, you don't pay for it. You actually, you, you qualify for it, and it, it reduces the amount you, it's a benefit. It's not a bill. It's not a tax that you're paying.
And we can look up your specific property and see if you're getting the homestead exemption, if you have not applied for it and, and can apply for it.
Who can do that?
What's her address?
What's your address?
Yeah.
Part of the pines, some of the pines is in the county and some are in the city.
But she has, well, I don't have the, do I reach connect to where?
Right. She has additional services for the city that we have in the county. So, she, she pays city and county taxes. And you just pay taxes, which is why hers is higher than yours.
I think there should be some ruling, I suppose, as to what the county is responsible for and what the city is responsible for. Because like I say, her property, her house is much smaller. And yet, she pays both taxes that are higher than what I pay for.
Right. There, there are rules for the city. There are different rules for the city, different services you get for the city, additional services that you get in, for the city. But it's where people choose to buy their house. If they buy it in the city, they know they're going to get gas. I mean, they're going to get garbage pickup, water, sewer, all these things.
But she pays for that. She pays for the garbage pickup. I take the city water, which she pays for too. She pays for the garbage pickup, which I don't. It just seems it's something wrong, that she has to pay both taxes.
Unfortunately, wherever a city and county property lines are, when the city ends, there's, there's, there's several other instances where, in a neighborhood, one person is in the city and one person's in the county. That's just the, the city-county line there. So, you know, there's not a, there's not a finite line from city to county that exempts this whole neighborhood is in the county, and this one's in the city. So, there's going to be that line where, you know, if her house was 100 yards in another direction, she'd be fully in the county. But she, I don't want to say unfortunately she bought in city, but she bought a house in the city. So, those are the, the taxes required in the ci, for city services as well.
It just seems to me that the city provides, the county provides certain stuff. And if the county's providing something, the city does not provide it, so why does it provide it? It just seems like the taxes should equal out.
All right. Anybody else wants to come forward, assist and comment? Sure. If you'll come forward, just introduce yourself. And for the record, where you live at. So, we got it for the record.
My name is Gussie Green Sutton. I live at 102 Turnowitz Road in Grand, Georgia. My concern is the school tax for seniors. I've, I've Googled and researched a lot of info. And I see where some counties do that for their seniors, 65 and older. And they have, based on what they decide, pretty much. But... But based on what you all have explained since I walked in, it appears to me, and correct me, that you have decided we are not opting out, right? And therefore, we will continue to pay, as a senior, continue to pay the school tax.
That's the school board. That would be the school...
So, that's not here.
That's not here.
You want to talk to her about that?
Okay, talk to her.
Yeah.
That's what I need to know.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Right. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect any exemptions that are in place right now. There is a, some years ago, 20, 25 years ago, I think, there's a, there's a $15,000 exemption right now for school taxes for seniors, and there are some requirements that go along with that, but that's something to explore if you don't have that currently. So, that'll stay in place. I believe it's a $15,000 exemption. No impact on that from opting in, opting out, or staying in. So, this one is completely separate from that. It doesn't have any impact on our current exemptions.
There's a form on the tax assessor's website, or you can pick one up from their office to sign up for that additional $15,000 credit or deduction.
Thank you.
That would be great. Our chief tax assessor's back there. He can help you with that.
Should I just turn this one?
Yes, he can.
Okay. Here's the, that's Mr. Trump, right?
Yes.
Yes. Hold on. Anyone else like to come forward tonight? No one else?
It's clear as mud, right?
No.
All right. Come on up, but you've got a question. I know it. Come on. Ask.
I want to know...
Come on forward, so we can hear you on the microphone, because there's people at home right now. I can't...
I understand. I don't want, I don't think I want to get into it. But I do want to ask this question. How are you going to go about, like, she said, you say your house is 211, theirs 100 and so on. So, how y'all going to level that out?
So, on our agenda tonight is to start planning for a countywide revaluation.
We're actually funding the procedure.
Right. To discuss funding a countywide revaluation. We've been recommended by the state that we need to do that, that all properties need to be reassessed. All of them need to be looked at, because just like we said, we've got this. And for it to be like this, we need all properties to be looked at and assessed and valued properly.
So, do you just assess the outside of the house?
So, yes, really.
They're not coming in, no.
So, when your house was built, you had to, you had to put what it was built with, you know, this type of construction, this type of roof, and this type. And so, they look at when your house was actually built, what it is now. If it's the same, they're going to put you, the grade is the same, and just do the appreciation for a number of years, and then the size of the house, number of bedrooms, comparable houses like that, sales at what different rates, size of your acreage, that kind of stuff. If it's a new house, then they're going to look at it and determine that first phase that they done when an existing house was built. They'll look at the grades and the construction type, you know? Is it sheet rock walls? Is it block walls? Is it a wooden roof? Is it a metal roof? You know, those all go into the calculations and the valuation of what your house is assessed at. And there's, all those are, you know, lined out of how they assess them.
Any other comments tonight? If none, can I get a motion to adjourn the, what, public hearing? If there's no comments?
So, moved.
Second.
Oh, favor eye. Thank y'all for coming. We've got a meeting right after this, so y'all stay free.